Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our 2021-2022 legislative session breakfast being held virtually here with the city of Richfield. Unfortunately, we're meeting virtually because of COVID. But thank you, everyone, to our representatives who are with us today. Thank you to our city staff or department heads. Everyone who is here with us is here to talk about what our legislative priorities are. And then I just before I pass it to the city council members, I do just want to give such a huge welcome to all of our representatives who are here and those representatives who are not here with us this morning for continuing to fight tirelessly for Richfield and our priorities, our legislative priorities this past year. There was a lot of different things that our representatives helped us with, whether it was bonding for the bonding for the underpass, whether it was continued support from Hennepin County for our mental health work that we're doing in our police department. So many crucial things that our representatives have just done such a great job advocating for, particularly with COVID continuing. We have so many things impacting our families and we're just greatly appreciative for everything that you are doing on behalf of our residents, on behalf of our city. So just as a as a reminder, we will be recording for our residents to be able to see this. And then if you have any questions, please do use the chat function. We have a chat function here that you can add any questions to. So I will pass it to our city council to see if they'd like to say anything before we begin with our city manager. So council member Supple, would you like to share anything? And you could just pass it to the next person.
All right. Thank you. And good morning, everybody. And I want to echo the thanks for all of you, for all the work you've done for us and all the advocacy and the partnership. We really, really appreciate it. And I recently heard a speaker that talked about that we need to do more utopian thinking and start dreaming big. And I think that's what this whole legislative session is about. We need to talk about equity. We need to talk about affordable housing. We need to talk about things like upgrading and replacing Woodlake Nature Centers. So thank you for helping us all as we work for those dreams. And I am looking forward to working with you all. So I'm going to pass it on to council member Troutman.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. And thank you to everybody on the call. Some of you I was able to connect with in person yesterday. So it's good to it's good to see you again. And and I couldn't agree more with my colleagues that I have to start by just saying how grateful I am for the work that we accomplished this last session. You know, some of it is the fruition of decades long work. Commissioner Gotel, back when she was mayor Gotel, and we're really grateful to see progress moving forward. Also, when we look forward to to the next legislative session, we're we're all encouraged by the budget surplus. And how we steward those resources are really important because we know even though there's a surplus, not not all parts of our economy, and not everybody in our community has felt the benefit of the surplus and the economic growth. So we appreciate your partnership and we look forward to continuing to to partner with 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 all of you that I know on the call and for those that I don't. Thank you for for showing up and participating with us here in Richfield. Oh, and is council member Heyford O'Leary on the line there? I see I see him.
You must steer in iPad mode, Simon. But thank you. Yeah, thank you all for for being here today. It's great to see you unfortunately again, again, virtually. But it was great to see many of you in person at the Woodlake Nature Center tour. This new document, or you know, our staff has put together with our guidance, I think is a really nice, it's a nice layout of what our priorities are. It also tells the story of Richfield. And I just want to thank all of you for being part of that story of turning around this community of moving forward and growing and becoming a really even more attractive community than we've been in the past. You've been a part of that. And I know future investments, especially with like Nature Center, would allow us to continue moving forward and to be a really vital part of the region. So thank you for making the time for being here today. Yeah, I'm excited to see you all. And I'm so grateful for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heyford O'Leary. I don't see Councilmember Wayland on. So before I pass it to City Manager Rodriguez, I just want to acknowledge and thank our Richfield Public Schools Superintendent Steve Unowski. Thank you so much for joining us. Superintendent Unowski just shows the continued and strong partnership that we have between the city and the school district. So thanks for being here today. And City Manager Rodriguez, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go over, I will call them kind of our pillars to approaching our legislative advocacy work. So many of our city values focus around reducing economic racial health and education gaps, you know, throughout systems. And we're doing what we can locally. But we realize that it's going to take partnership at the state and federal level. And so we hope to continue to partner with you on that goal. Also, we also support local control and oppose any unfunded mandates. It really is difficult for cities, especially cities with moderate tax bases like Richfield, when there's unfunded mandates. And I will also go through our top three. Actually, I'm going to ask Recreation Services Director Amy Markle to talk about our number one priority, which is a new Woodlake Nature Center building and getting some bonding money for that. She's such an effective advocate for it. So I'll ask Amy to do to introduce that topic. And I I know you've heard it before, but it's always a treat to hear from Amy.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. And thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. I know a lot of you are connected to Woodlake Nature Center and have celebrated 50 years with us this year for this beloved facility. And as we celebrate 50 years and we are continuing looking at the future of this facility, we know it impacts so many people across our community in the region. You know, again, about 65% of all people who come to programming and rent recreational equipment there, we know are from outside Richfield. So we are impacting not only our own residents, but also people from around the region and even greater Minnesota. Our building's in, you know, rough shape. We've done a lot to maintain it over the years, but it is heavily used. It currently doesn't meet the high demand we have from different school organizations and groups. So we are envisioning a sustainably built nature center that really can be a model to our communities on what sustainability looks like in design and function and operation. We have always, you've been very proud to serve our community very equitably at the Woodlake Nature Center. And that programming is often free to low cost. So we want to continue providing those opportunities for everybody. I'm also really excited how accessible our center is for people to access it via bus, bike, all the different transportation modes with the roads. And we even see people come from the international airport, which is just, you know, a few miles away. So, you know, I think we have a tremendous opportunity to do something lasting for our region. It's provide, you know, a critical outlet, particularly the last year and a half during COVID for people to de-stress, focus on wellness, and have those educational opportunities to connect with their local environment and nature. So, you know, we are seeking funding through the bonding bill process, the state of $10 million. And we are piecing together our match. But we are hopeful that we would receive funding and start the process, you know, really looking towards the next 50 years of a sustainable Woodlake Nature Center.
Thanks, Amy. So it's appropriate that the opposition to selling liquor and grocery stores is our number two priority, because we were number two in the state. Our four liquor stores were number two in terms of sales across the state last year. Our liquor store directors, Bill Fillmore, just done a great job. Not only do we believe that it's safer to keep liquor out of grocery stores, the profits from our stores fund our parks and recreation capital budget. And in fact, it's the only dedicated funding source unless Director Merkel secures grant funding, or we can get it from local fundraising programs. Our stores are popular, they're secure, and they help create great recreation spaces. The third priority is really about local control, which I referenced earlier. We know there's been a lot of misinformation about development fees. Our fees are designed to recover the cost to review, approve, and inspect redevelopment projects. Sometimes the fees exceed the costs in a fiscal year, and sometimes they fall short. It's imperative that the the costs are set locally. A one size fits all approach will hurt cities. And that's all I have. I am going to introduce you. I don't think you have met our Human Services Manager Krista Guzman. She's been a terrific addition for Richfield, and she will summarize our priorities for Administrative Services.
Thank you so much, City Manager Rodriguez. I'm happy to be here with you all. So I'm going to go through a few priorities for Administrative Services in our department. The first one is supporting full reimbursement for cities for the cost of providing continued health insurance for police and firefighters. Our first responders disabled or killed in the line of duty. The city has paid a number of actually thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars towards continued health insurance benefits for those members who are elected this benefit, and only receive a small portion of that reimbursed by the state every year. The second priority is support reimbursement to cities for the cost of covering employees who are out on military leave. Again, a lot of times we see in our first responders and those departments, a lot of our staff are also members in the military. And the city has to cover for days that they are off for military leave, which is again, a number of costs to the city for overtime and for covering their shifts while they're away. The third priority is supporting legislative action to address increased workers' compensation costs, particularly rising medical costs related to COVID-19 and the presumptive clause for coverage for police officers and firefighters for post-traumatic stress disorder. Again, these are presumptive clauses. So that means that the city is obligated to pay for all costs associated with those types of claims. And the last priority is supporting policies that provide opportunities for employees diagnosed with PTSD to receive treatment for PTSD that could result in continued employment with the local government. We also, there's a working group through the League of Minnesota Cities for Duty Disability that is also working on recommendations related to mental health wellness within local government. And I think you'll also hear from some of our other members today about some of the other initiatives related to mental health in those fields. And it's something we're very passionate about and something that we'll continue to provide to our members. So we ask that you also support those policies. So with that, I don't have anything further. My contact information is included. I'm going to have to jump off to attend another meeting. But I believe our Community Development Department is up next.
Thank you, Krista. So I'm John Stark. I'm the current Community Development Director. That's for about another, gosh, I think, like six working days. For those of you that aren't aware, I will be leaving the city of Richfield. I've been with Richfield for 21 years. Absolutely love the community. It's always going to be my urban hometown, regardless of whether I'm working there or not. Starting in January, I'll be the city manager for the city of North St. Paul. Melissa Paleman, who's been our Assistant Community Development Director and a longtime employee, managing all of our planning and zoning and a lot of our redevelopment projects, will be taking over for me at least on an acting basis and hopefully, hopefully, much longer than that. I will tell you that the picture on this slide is not me and Melissa or our dog. I am going to go over a couple of these, and then Melissa is going to finish up with the third point. A lot of what we do, as you know, revolves around housing. And I'd like to thank you all so much for your support in the in our housing TIF legislation last year. That's going to allow us to spend pooled housing TIF in much different and in ways that will support affordable housing. We'd like to continue that work by asking you to support an amendment to the TIF statute. Currently, the TIF statutes for a housing tip district say that a project is eligible to receive housing TIF if 40% of the housing is available to households at 60% of the AMI, or if 20% of the households are affordable at 50% of the AMI. I know these are a lot of numbers. But we're asking for deeper affordability. So we're asking that the TIF statute allow only 10% of the units be affordable, but they be much more affordable. So we're asking that 10% of the units at 30% of the area median income would qualify in and that would not negate the other two options. It just provides a third option. Secondly, we are asking that you support legislation for the preservation and rehabilitation of naturally occurring affordable housing, or NOAH. A couple of examples did go to the legislature last year, but were not passed. That included the use of housing infrastructure bonds for NOAH housing purchase and/or rehab, and one to appropriate state funds to make loans or grants for the purchase or rehab of NOAH properties. And when we give you our handout, we're going to give you that level of detail at some point, I believe. You know, of greatest interest to us is funding for rehabilitation, because we have so many naturally occurring affordable housing units here. So that the rehabilitation part is really more urgent for us than the new construction piece. And then I'm going to pass it along to Melissa for our third bullet. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. As John said, my name is Melissa Paleman. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director. And I wanted to touch on our support for local autonomy and the development of our regulations and comprehensive plans. As John, as John mentioned, we're very supportive of affordable housing and tools and funding that will help us to create that in Richfield. However, we are not supportive of one size fits all regulations that will, in a fully developed community like Richfield, really tie our hands in terms of a lot of development. The flexibility that things like PUDs, Planned Unit Developments, provide for us is very important when you're not doing greenfield development. And additionally, regulations that would require specific densities and things like that throughout a community should be decided at the local level. Richfield is working on regulations that will allow additional densities in all of our districts by rights. We believe that we're right sizing that for Richfield. And we encourage you to support local decision making in that in that regard. And I'm going to turn it over to, I'm sorry, I cannot read the next slide. Is it finance? That's next. Okay, thanks.
I'm going to take finance. Thank you, Melissa. Well, we will really miss John. And North St. Paul is lucky to have them. He leaves an amazing legacy in that he leaves a city that is just thriving and a very capable staff that are ready to step up and lead the department. Now for the sexy part of the presentation, finance priorities. Even though Community Development has done an awesome job to strengthen our tax base, it's still moderate and mostly residential. We still depend on state aid, and LGA is expected to be about 7% of our 2022 budget. So we want to make sure that program is funded and even would appreciate increase in it. We're also one of the few cities that run a motor vehicle department. And the state fees just aren't enough to cover costs. Bloomington had to close their facility for that same reason. We're doing our best, and there is strong demand. You just need to walk through our lobby any day to see that. But the structure and the reimbursements really just don't set us up for success. And finally, cybersecurity is a growing concern. We've tried to do our part by, we purchased insurance a couple of years ago, and we've increased training. But we hope for more assistance from at the state level. And then I will pass it on to our fire chief, Mike Dogish.
Good morning, everybody. And I, again, I would just echo everybody's thanks, and specifically to the state representatives that are on the call. One, for basically the second point, funding the Hometown Heroes Assistance Program, which has now been implemented. And I'm proud to report that it's making a huge difference already within the state. Minnesota is leading the way when it comes to first responder, mental health, physical health. And and this is a credit to the work that you've done at the state legislature. So thank you. Obviously, continuing to support the Hometown Heroes Assistance Program is is a big key for us in the fireside. And if with the budget surplus projected, if you want to spend some of that to round out our original request, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to take that funding and take that other $3 million and do more with it. Additionally, local control of EMS, Richfield does have a direct impact with that one. We have, Mayor and I have had to deal with some citizen complaints that came through the fire department because they thought it was us. And we found that it wasn't actually us. So there is some need for us to have a say in what the citizens of Richfield actually receive as far as a service. The local control issue is currently being evaluated by the Office of the Legislative Auditor, and we are awaiting those results. And we expect to have them early in January. So you'll probably see those along with the fire service when they're available. And lastly, I would just speak to oppose the efforts of the Builders Association to limit residential sprinklers. Again, we'll work collaboratively with them to try and do what we can to make the best building possible. But in order to do that, we also have to make it safe. And that's really our hope is to continue to have those conversations and make sure that the the technology is put in place where we can and make it safe. So thank you for the time. And I will turn it over to our Liquor Operations Director, Bill Fillmore.
Good morning. I'm Bill Fillmore, Liquor Operations Director. And I want to thank you for your past support. Katie already discussed the perennial issue of wine in the grocery and convenience stores. Anything you can do for us, we appreciate it. The second item is we look for your support in opposing the elimination of the current Minnesota law. It's called the Coleman Act, which it's an open distribution for wholesalers. Eliminating that would allow it be an exclusivity of brands. The bottom line is everybody's cost goes up and it's and eventually it just gets passed down to the consumer. So your support on that item, we would appreciate that. And that's all I have. Now I'll turn the mic over to Jay.
Thanks, Bill. My name is Jay Henther. I'm the Public Safety Director, Chief of Police. Again, as everybody has said, thank you for being on with us this morning. We greatly appreciate all the work that you do at the legislature. And County Commissioner Gotel, thank you for all the work that you do at the county for us, especially when it comes to the full-time social worker that will be putting on board here in 2022. We've had a part-time social worker that we've shared with you guys, and that's been very successful with responding to calls that we usually frequently go out on and resolving those calls in an effective manner. So a couple of things that I have. Police Officer Safety, Health, and Wellness, we call it protector, protecting the protector's legislation. It's similar to what the Hometown Heroes Act is for firefighters that was most recently passed. The legislation would provide law enforcement agencies with training for emotional resiliency and understanding of trauma. Additionally, we create peer support groups, provide mental health checks, therapy, suicide prevention awareness, and family support. It sort of dovetails with what Krista talked about, the League of Minnesota Cities is doing, and the support that we've gotten from them, from the Chiefs of Police Association. So, you know, we're all looking at obviously making our employees as healthy and resilient as possible. We're also looking at a statewide solution to better track racial disparities in traffic enforcement, like including race and driver's license and state identification card databases. We recognize the importance of having good data to evaluate our our systems and practices and to build trust with the community. Also looking at legislation that provides a way for all persons to obtain a driver's license regardless of citizen status. Individuals will learn the rules of the road and become qualified to safely operate a motor vehicle. As a licensed driver, they also will need to obtain auto insurance. I know this was brought up by Representative Howard several years ago, I think House File 1500. And the city of Richfield did support that. And we support it again as a possible bill for the 2022 session. Supporting the Arbitration Revision Act, Richfield has led the way on this. This is creating a more objective arbitration process by having the Office of Administrative Hearings handle all the police officer termination grievances. I know there's been a lot of progress with this bill at the legislature. As far as chiefs of police and I think city administrators and elected officials, we don't think it has gone far enough. In Richfield was a test case for that back in 2017, as a termination case went all the way to the Supreme Court. Support for the Officer Integrity Act, allowing Minnesota licensed police officers to be terminated from public employment without the opportunity to challenge the remedy or termination, should it be based upon the will for intentional dishonesty, deception, or similar unethical or illegal activity or conduct that is deemed sufficient to impact credibility in court testimony. And I know that we've had that go forward several times, not only from our association, but also from the communities and the cities that have supported that. We don't oppose the main officers due process right to arbitration. However, you know, obviously, what has gone on the past couple of years in our profession in law enforcement, obviously, we're looking for ways to make sure that our profession is continues down the road of professionalism and making sure that we take care of our employees. So that's all I have. But thank you for your time.
I'm sorry. I'll turn it over to Kristin Asher in Public.
That's fine. I got it, Jay. Good morning. I'm Kristin Asher, the Public Works Director with Richfield. It's nice to see everybody kind of this morning. It's much better in person. So I kind of miss that. Let's see, okay, our priorities this year, I'm happy to, everybody knows that we're done talking about the underpass. But I have to say, usually that's what I'm talking about. So the maximum local contribution, I know, year after year, I brought up that how, what a stress that is on our communities and a lot of communities to have to put together these funding packages for these projects that are needed. And I could go over the numbers. I have numbers and percentages of what we put into 66th Street and Portland Avenue Reconstructs. And quickly, 21 million between those two is what the city's share was. And that and our MSA contribution every year, our allotment is 1.2 million on average. So that's a lot of money. And that's hard stress on Richfield. And we bond for that. And we use our bonding capacity to the limits for, sorry, those many years. So we can only bond for those projects. But I just wanted to point out another example of what's happening on that front. Mendat rolled out in August of 2020, a new, I guess it's a guidance document on how to determine bridge ownership and bridge ownership responsibilities. And what they, what that guidance leads to is a pretty rough conversation we had about the underpass because they wanted the city of Richfield to own it. And we don't own bridges. We're not in that business. That would have been a huge burden on us. And actually, the only reason we weren't, we're not owning that that structure is because we had assigned set of bridge plans on the shelf before August of 2020. So I am concerned about this new guidance. They pushed really hard on the underpass. And there are a handful of bridges that are going to be replaced on 494 as that project moves forward. And I'm a little bit concerned of where we're going to land on that. So I think I just want to raise that up a little bit, that we cannot take on the burden for things like that because the state doesn't have enough money to. We don't have, we have even less money. So but that's kind of the trend. And it's every time they do Hennepin County or the state does a new cost share policy, it's always more burden on the locals. Okay, the statewide comprehensive and stable funding for Minnesota's aging infrastructure, I'm just going to bring that up. I do, you know, realize that we do have a nice lump sum of money coming our way from the federal infrastructure bill, which is great. And I hope that we can get that into the hands of the people that can deliver it and start making a difference in our communities right away. But we do need to have some sort of ongoing comprehensive and reliable funding source for our infrastructure in the state. And then the limited liability commercial salt. So what that is, is that like, say, Richfield, we put salt on the roads when it snows. Everybody puts salt on the roads, but it's the amount of salt. And if you don't know how detrimental that is to their environment, one teaspoon of salt in a five gallon bucket will kill anything in it. And so that's not a lot of salt. And about 10 years ago, this came rolled out from the And about 10 years ago, this came rolled out from the state pollution control agency, a challenge actually in Nine Mile Creek I don't want to get in the weeds, but you know, there's a a challenge to reduce your salt, Richfield was able to reduce their salt more than 50% in that first year and we've been able to maintain that. And there was no impact on safety on the roadway, so more salt does not equal safer, but when you're a private owner like a Southdale or a shop set Lindell, they over apply because of liability reasons, they don't want somebody to slip them fall. And this is what the limited liability is for is to encourage them to give them a safety net that if they're applying the salt at a reasonable rate even though it's less than what they're currently doing, that they will have some protection against that and that's an environmental that's an environmental ask for this. And then, oh disposable wipes. Their label is flushable, there's nothing flushable beyond toilet paper, I'm just going to say most Kleenexes are not flushable either and that that's a lot of extra expenses on our systems, we have pumps and lift stations and things like that, that you just can't have these wipes coming through, we get backups in our main that backup in people's homes because of this, it's just false advertising. And I think the other two are pretty self-explanatory, so I think I'll just stop there.
And I'm going to jump in really quick, my apologies, I had the slideshow shut up here. Does this look better for everyone? Bit bigger?
I don't see a difference Chris.
Okay.
But anyway, if there aren't any questions, I'll just pass it on to recreation director Amy Markle.
Thanks Kristen, I'm recreation services director Amy Markle and your again top priority is seeking funding to help support a new nature center at Woodlake. And just a huge thank you to everybody that's provided support for this project. I'm excited where it's going and I just think there's so much potential and possibility of doing something awesome at Woodlake. Looking at other priorities, the top three that we have are really in support of programs that help us fill in gaps to get projects done that are really impactful for our community. The first one is funding the Hennepin County sports grant program, the second one is the outdoor recreation grant program through the Minnesota DNR, both of those have been instrumental this past year in creating our adventure park at Augsburg Park here in Richfield, it's a fully inclusive park and we utilize both grant programs to help that dream become a reality, so just continued support of those programs. And also the mighty Dex grant program with more arenas, looking at the refrigeration systems and making them more sustainable for the future, just continued support of that program. We are looking into increasing the sustainable aspect of our HVAC system and hopefully we'll be utilizing that grant program in the future. We also look at sustainability efforts in our community, so we are looking for support of proper labeling of compostable products. Not allowing products with misleading claims to be sold or distributed in the state. You know, and as our community and other surrounding communities really push to achieve some of their sustainability goals, you know, more and more families are composting. Richfield's a great example, we just started our organized collection program at the beginning of October and within the first nine weeks, we are close to 30% of our community fully participating in the program, which is a significant amount of waste we're diverting from our landfills. But it can be confusing for families with how things are labeled and when we have a contaminated load, it gets rejected at the compost transportation, so it's really important things are correctly labeled from the manufacturers. We also are looking in support and for legislation that would designate all solid waste taxes generated to the state select committee on recycling and environmental fund to support sustainability efforts, you know, as is communities keep working through a lot of their goals and initiatives, they are expensive. So programs like that would help support those efforts. We also are looking for support of Hennepin County funding that would expand infrastructure at the local level for the creation of compost processing sites and anaerobic digesters and I know there's funding that's being stopped by Hennepin County for our new anaerobic digester in Brooklyn Park. And that would be, you know, very helpful to have one closer to Richfield and the populated area right now, our waste is being taken out to Shakopee, so it would be nice to have one closer to our community. And I just think as more and more people are composting, which is fantastic, we need more facilities to help support that behavior. Also the supportive legislation that includes extended producer responsibility initiatives and just making sure that manufacturers think about the life of the product from you know, creation to when it's done being used. And also the support, the development of and funding for zero waste initiatives across the community.
I can turn it over to Chris.
All right, well, thanks everybody for attending and being able to listen to all the Richfield 2022 legislative priorities. My apologies about the technical difficulties with the slide presentation, I'll be sure to send it out to everybody after so you have a little bit better ability to read through it. Again, I want to thank you all for being here and for you know, listening to the presentation, we can open up for any questions or if there's none, then we'd also like to hear from some of the representatives and kind of what you're looking at this coming year and that maybe the city should be aware of and things that you may want our support for.
I'd be happy to go first. And it is really nice to see everybody, it'd be great to be in person, but it's still good to see some friendly faces this morning and I guess where where I'd want to start is something that council member Supple said about the the opportunity that we're in really to dream big. And you know, we have, I mean, these are just of course the cliche unprecedented times, but we have a historic budget surplus. And what what we need to do is understand that Minnesotans are facing historic challenges and to really seize this opportunity to to focus on the most urgent needs facing our community. And so just really value our partnership and to understand what you're hearing on the ground from from our residents and how do we craft policies that really get at the core issues that, you know, help ease the strain for people that are just trying so hard to keep it all together. A couple big picture things. What will one, in reviewing all of the priorities, it'd be great to to see a list of kind of what are existing bills and what what are kind of new ideas? You know, and if what's on the new idea front, if we as legislators can be helpful in moving the ball forward to get language and legislation drafted, let us know. Because we want to help move these agendas at the Capitol. And then the other piece in terms of going back to dream big. I don't think a lot of people anticipated something so significant, a $7 billion surplus and so I would just encourage all of you to go back and dream big and think, you know, what are what are things that that maybe in in the past didn't seem in the realm of reasonable to request but might be now and and let's just dream big together and see if there's things that we can do and propose to make a big difference. Specifically on housing, that's an area where no surprise, I'll be investing a lot of time and energy and you know, with with a with a surplus of this size, we absolutely must make this the biggest oldest, most historic investment we make in housing, i- if not now, when? Is really kind of the my message. And in particular, naturally occurring affordable housing. That'll be one of, if not, my biggest priorities to finally make sure that the state steps up. And we're building more support by the day to do that and the city's been very helpful in in coming to testify and help be part of that push and so want to renew those efforts. The a couple in the realm of newer ideas that I'd love to get feedback and especially on housing, I think it'd be great to do a whole standalone meeting to kind of scheme together about how we can work together. But something that I'm working on with Senator Dietzick is looking at our tax code and can we provide more direct housing resources to communities almost through a formula like local government aid, a a housing stability aid of sorts. And can we, you know, give cities the tools to address the the challenges that they're facing in their communities and and so we're still developing that, but would really welcome feedback in terms of what and how that could be structured in a way that's helpful to a city like Richfield. One question I have and this could be again a flag for a longer discussion on the local zoning reforms conversation, that is going to be a big conversation at the Capitol this session. I think that it's an important one, every time it comes up, I always say that it's by no means a silver bullet to our housing, affordable housing challenges and in some ways the the elephant in the room is we need to invest in housing, the the resources are the bigger issues. But what I'd be curious about getting feedback from the city on is it seems to me there are cities like Richfield that are doing innovative, great work in the affordable housing space, but there are cities that aren't, there are cities that could be doing a lot more that aren't doing their share. And so how do we tailor policies that get at that issue for the cities that aren't doing what they ought to do? Without tying the hands of cities like Richfield that are doing the right things and and so that's a complicated conversation and just would love to discuss more about how we don't kind of throw the baby out with the bathwater as we're looking at that issue. So I'll stop for now, I thought there was one other, oh, one other specific issue that chief mentioned related to arbitration. Of course, we took progress and passed an arbitration reform and it would be curious what what the chief's thoughts are on how that's working thus far, I understand the idea of wanting to kind of go further but would be curious on the feedback of what you're you're seeing or what you're hearing from your colleagues in other cities about how it's currently working. And I do think that there's some things we can do in terms of postboard reform, Representative Frazier's doing a lot of really good work there to sort of strengthen their hand and and again, really appreciate the city's leadership on that front. So to end where I started, let's dream big and let's do it together.
I think I will go next, good morning everyone, it's just good to see you all. I I would like to build on representative Howard's comments, a couple of things that I I not necessarily today, but eventually I do think that we do need to have a specific conversation about housing. I think it was important for me to hear about the focus on rehabilitation of existing units and I would like to hear more because I think that's an important kind of message from Richfield in terms of the cost and opportunity to preserve what you value. And I think we can be a pretty strong voice in the state of Minnesota and get funding from different sources. Obviously, the surplus money is there, but also bonding dollars that we could advocate for because I think housing is a big conversation for that funding. I would like to connect that too to a question about the TIF proposal that you have, I don't think I I got that in terms of decreasing from the 30% to the 10%, I I want to understand that better, I don't know if I I got that, how you want to proceed in terms of a you know, kind of lowering the percentage and then, you know, kind of getting deeper, you describe that as getting deeper into the cost and so I I think we need to do both, but again, you know, I want to understand what Richfield needs to do. And so clearly, the Woodlake Center, Nature Center is a is a place that we want to push forward, everybody loves it, I have been able to visit it a little bit more as a result of your advocacy. And seeing, you know, the amount of people that are there every single time I go, no matter what the time of the day there are events there, you know, birthday parties and weddings and all kinds of things, so clearly we need to do that and you have our full support. And the last thing that I would like to say is that we need all of you but especially for our chief of police, for me personally, I feel that we need to have a deeper conversation about our relationships with communities of color. I think that this theme about our relationship with the police for communities of color has been used politically in a very negative way and it does not reflect the connection that our police really have with communities, especially, you know, when I see Richfield and how much you work together to improve the lives of people and I think there is an obligation to connect these stories and to create a different narrative about how we collectively want to respond to communities, how we want to do our work better, how we respect communities. I think there's going to be a very tough conversation because all of us are for reelection, up for reelection and this is going to be a topic that is going to try to divide us, divide our communities and I think Richfield is in a very good position to do the opposite, to show that we can work with our police to to work, you know, in in profound ways with communities. So I would like to invite, you know, city council members and of course our beloved mayor Maria Regan to perhaps have a conversation about what that means and how can we be a better kind of better messengers for those relationships so that they are not, you know, the political forces don't take us into a conversation that could become very uncomfortable and impede progress, in my opinion. So those are two things that I think are going to be incredibly important, of course, the surplus and some of the political issues that are being used only for political purposes and don't resolve any problems, so thank you everyone.
Thank you Senator, it's a certainly a priority for our city as well. There were some questions asked and I wanted to give staff a chance to respond. We we ask that the department directors present their priorities because they are the experts and they're certainly shaping the priorities as well with their professional organizations, so. Representative Howard had a question and Senator Torres Ray had a question, so I think the first question is for CD, so John, if you want to respond briefly.
Yeah, thank you. So representative Howard's question I think was, you know, how do we how do we require or push some communities that haven't hold their weight on affordable housing to do so without having a negative impact on the good performers like Richfield? And that's something we've struggled with and that's a very good question. You know, my thought is to always reward the good performers and to have a long to have a long solution for this not to be year by year by year. And so for example, if you said that we're going to have a permanent program that that gives funding based on your five year affordable housing creation then it rewards communities like Richfield that have been doing it. But then it gives an incentive for other communities that haven't been doing it to say, wait, if we have this as a strategy now for the next whatever, three years or five years and we really invest in this, we will get rewarded. That would be my thought, something like that. Then Senator Torres Ray had a, just want some clarification on the 30% AMI housing. Really, the way it works in a housing TIF district and it does get confusing because there are all these different percentages, it's this percent at this percent or this percent at this percent and so it gets confusing, it's it's a mouthful. But what you should think about is 60% AMI housing is considered low to moderate income housing. And so our TIF housing currently supports that. 50% of the AMI is considered low income housing and our housing TIF districts support that. 30% of the AMI is very low income housing. And there's a need there, our housing TIF districts do not recognize that in any really meaningful way. And so what we're asking for is our tools to help us support very low income housing. So housing at 30 So housing at thirty percent or less of the area median income. Um we think that uh tax increment financing has been such a great tool for other affordable housing, that it would be the best tool for this, but there may be others. Um so again, it's just looking for a a toolkit to address the the most serious uh housing needs, uh the deepest affordability. The other thing, uh you know, and I think some of this is changing. Uh in years past, when we talked about thirty percent AMI housing, we always talked about that needing support services. And I think, you know, five, ten years ago, that was probably true, that if somebody was at thirty percent AMI, it's because of some uh you know, some um issue that they that they have that they need help with, uh that they're weren't able to participate in our economy uh because of some um obstacles that they have. I don't think that's true anymore. I think that there are people at thirty percent AMI that are a hundred percent capable of of participating in our economy. They just don't have the opportunity. Uh and so we've we've really scaled back on talking about thirty percent AMI housing needing support services uh included in that. So help hopefully that's a little bit more helpful. Um and you know, we we've got a lot of really smart people working on housing issues, whether it's in Richfield or uh in the region. And I think Representative Howard had talked about like a a working group specific to that. I think that's an excellent idea. There is currently a Hennepin County Staff Working Group uh that meets I believe it's monthly, if not at least bimonthly, that is hosted by Kathy Bennett from the Urban Land Institute. Uh I don't know how many of you know Kathy Kathy Capone Bennett. Um but that work is being done at the staff level and to maybe integrate um some policy level people into that group on occasion, I think would be an excellent idea.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Katie.
No, Chief, I was going to ask if you wanted to respond to the arbitration question briefly.
Yes, I can. I think Representative Howard, I think i- it was a, it's a good start from where we've come from, talking with my peers um to have more selected arbitrators specializing in police arbitration, specifically termination cases. Um I know it's been a long and lengthy process getting those arbitrators selected um and then putting them through training. But I, what we're concerned about from a statewide perspective is that it's still an arbitrator and and you still have to strike arbitrators and and once the strikes are done, you flip the coin and you get who you get. We would rather see it move to more of an administrative law judge process. Um so it's more objective and and that's where our concern, we're 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 really gr- it's really great that we've made progress in getting out of the older system through the Bureau of Mediation Services, but I think we still need to push it further in order to make sure that uh chiefs of police have that authority to terminate employees that they need to terminate. So that's what that's what I've been told.
Thanks, Chief. Ju- just to follow up there, have you, and I could talk with the the Chiefs folks too, but have you heard how how often the new systems has been used? I I had heard like the the first case that they used the new system went well, so we were like one for one. Um but I'm I'm just curious if you've heard how much the new system has been used. I I'd heard the same feedback that it took a while to select the arbitrators and just curious what the track record's been thus far.
Uh I don't, I I know the exact same case that you just talked about. I think um that could be possibly the only time that it's used. I can talk to our executive director and our membership to see if it's been used elsewhere in the state of Minnesota. I don't have any other figures other than that one case.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I can go next.
Are other folks having difficulty um hearing the Senator? No. Oh, now we can't hear you at all.
Try without the earbuds and see if that works. My computer fan is so loud that I try to use the earbud buds to try and make it less noisy, but anyway, I will try without. Um sorry about that. And I really appreciate your having us virtually again this year. Um it's great to be able to hear from you all. I wish we could be together in person. It would be a lot nicer, but um I do appreciate having this opportunity to hear from each of you about um priorities in your departments and what the overall priorities are. And I look forward to working on many of these um in the upcoming session. Um I think that uh as Representative Howard mentioned, you know, any any uh way that you can provide us with a kind of link to uh which of these are are in bill form or which of them, you need help getting into bill form. I'm happy to work with our staff about and drafting um any of the language into bills for you at any time. So please let me know. Um happy to work on the Wood Lake Nature Center proposal. Um I'm hoping that uh we can get a Senate um Capital Investment Committee visit to the site. Uh we've been told there's a date or some dates in January when they will be doing tours in the metro area. And I'm actively lobbying for our our uh projects to be included in that tour. So um hopefully, I will have um the ability to to give you good news on that. Um if not, you know, I will still work with the committee members and um be talking with them about the project as as much as I can uh to make sure that it's that's discussed in the um in the Senate as well as in the House. Um so I I appreciate um hearing about the priorities that you have for uh vision for Richfield. Um I think as Representative Howard said, we have a great opportunity this session to develop a vision that really helps um all Minnesotans. And I hope that um in the Senate, I can work on addressing, you know, a use of the um surplus and use of federal money in a way that really benefits the people who um have not seen, uh you know, the 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 type of growth and changes, positive changes in their lives over the past couple of years, um as some others have. Uh we need to be addressing economic inequalities and racial inequalities and looking at ways to use these these funds in a way that will will address these issues. Um so I am, my top priorities are to work in the human services and health areas. Um trying to uh see what we can do to better um serve the the needs of those who are facing economic challenges. Um we know that, um for example, in the the caregiving realm, that we're facing great shortages in um personnel to to care for people in childcare um in direct service personnel. Um and a lot of it has to do with uh the fact that uh people aren't able to live on the salaries that they make. So uh we need to address wages and uh scheduling uh benefits that um people can work in these roles and and uh make uh a living, you know, that they can live on these the wages that they make. So that's a high priority for me to keep working on childcare especially um and also um long-term care and um direct service personnel because all of these areas need um greater stability uh for people and affordability for childcare, but um people need to be able to make a living wage to to work in these areas. Um another area that I wanted to mention, um in seeing one of your priorities about cybersecurity, I would be interested in talking more with you about that. Um we have started a Legislative Commission on Cybersecurity and um I I'm a part of that and we're trying to find ways to to help um statewide uh with cybersecurity issues and I'd be interested in learning more about um how you could benefit or, you know, what types of needs you have as a city that we could be looking for ways to help with that. So hopefully, I can and connect with you on that and any other of the topics as you see come up. Um I hope you'll continue to reach out and let me know when you need assistance assistance in the Senate because I'm happy to work on issues for you. So thanks again and um let me know if you have any questions. Thanks.
I can go next. I'll go uh last, rounding out the delegation, um the the legislative delegation. Um and I echo uh Senator Wickland and uh and Senator Torres Ray and Representative Howard say, Howard say, especially I'm thinking about how we are uh really understanding how this the inequities in this in our economy right now is impacting workers and kids. Um and all of the ways people are living, that their 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 house, their housing costs, their healthcare costs, their childcare costs. Um and so as we think about this, uh uh the budget, I think one of the things that's really important is looking in uh um into the surplus we have. A lot of it is one-time money and it really does lay bare um some of the the inequities and and really, for me, the priorities are thinking about how we're both using uh the surplus we have, but also thinking about how we can uh structurally um uh uh make changes uh really to think about those uh the workers in our economy that are especially at the 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 uh bottom end of our um uh the economic uh tier. So um a few things that I think are going to be really important priorities, I know that are going to be a priorities in the House. Uh one is paid family leave um and thinking about, uh I think we have seen and and in our labor market now um that folks are um caring for their uh kids, they're caring for their elders, they're caring for themselves. Um and we don't have uh um uh right now, many folks don't have access to uh um the the resources they need to do that. Um so people are leaving the workforce and also just struggling to get by. Um and that is an important uh opportunity we have, uh because a big piece of that is uh one-time money to set up the system, uh but thinking about those those pieces are really important. Um also, I think uh um as we think about uh uh workers um and Senator Wickland mentioned this, but thinking about uh uh childcare uh knowing that we we need both more resources, but also we need to make sure it is an economy uh uh that works for kids and works for parents and works for uh the childcare providers. Um and I think that what we're seeing in Minnesota is what we're seeing across the country, uh which is uh a an incredible demand. Uh it is a workforce demand, it's an early childhood education um um issue. Uh and uh and we are clearly uh have meet meets that are not met. Um and so thinking about that. And then the last thing I'd say is, uh you know, this has been an incredibly challenging time for everybody uh and especially our kids and the folks in our schools. Um and we're seeing some of that uh um both and the the House has really prioritized kids and making sure that we have the the education resources. I think we're going to continue to do that. Uh one thing that I'm working on specifically and I think this year has been really brought into full focus is uh the really precarious position that our uh hourly paid workers in our schools are in, whether that's uh including bus drivers, um um educational assistants, pay professionals, um our um our nutrition staff. And um one of the the bills that I have that I think um is is more needed now than ever is ensuring that uh um that those folks um um at the end of the year, they they can uh uh have the security of of unemployment insurance, which they're currently excluded from. Um and one of the things that we know is that uh that part of the the bus driver shortage uh uh conversation is that folks uh um get laid off, when they get laid off and if they don't have work in the summer, they leave the industry. Um and I think that we are seeing in uh full force how uh really thinking about how we're taking care of all of the educators and all of the the adults in the school that that we need to care and provide for uh students um requires really thinking about all of the 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 structural um ways that um we're doing it. So it's a good, family-sustaining job uh that has a job security and also the the economic protections that uh that people need. Um the last thing I'll say, and this is a a bit niche, but um it's her follow-up is um I am, as a voting rights lawyer, I've spent a lot of time working on um how do we ensure that our, that we have uh fair and transparent elections? How do we ensure that elections administrators have what they need? Um and that voters have access they need. I have been hearing across the state um uh increasing concerns from elections administrators about this uh what I think uh fair to say is happening nationally, which is arising um just sort of in a culture of intimidation and pressure um and a highlight focused on uh um uh a job that should not be sexy. And in Minnesota, we know um we have, you know, thirty thousand uh 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 local elections uh judges and administrators and folks working really hard. And so uh um really focused on it, I would I I'm interested in listening more to what's happening in Richfield and folks uh are thinking about it. Um there has been, I think, the the effort to to target and and really um uh I would say pressure um uh uh and um uh create, whereas the culture in some places of intimidation has been really stressful and hard. And so we're looking at legislation law to make sure that uh uh elections administrators have have uh the protections they need to do their job um um and ensure uh that every vote is counted and that uh it goes back to being the the vanilla and very important uh but relatively anonymous job of uh of making sure that our elections are free and fair. So those are the the pieces that I'm thinking about um and working on and really interested. I know that a lot of those issues and and when we think about workers and and families and kids and um uh uh many of you have lots of thoughts and ideas, so interested in working with you, how we can really accomplish those goals and use this opportunity um as an opportunity to really um create some of that structural change in addition to um um increased funding.
Thank you, Representative Greenman. Um County Commissioner Gotal, would you like to share with us?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for letting me chat. I just wanted to say how much I I appreciate all the hard work that you folks did and, you know, being a former mayor of the city of Richfield, you are near and dear to my heart. It feels great to be back home here with you folks. I wish we were in person. Um you know, the greatest challenge that we had was that underpass when I was when I was mayor and there were so many people from the past and the present, both legislative and staff, who made that happen. And it was wonderful to be at the groundbreaking and I'll be there at the grand opening as well. So I just want to thank you. It's been decades in the making to get this project through and it took a lot of work. So thank you to the current administration and staff and to the past. Because it's it's been over a lot of time and a lot of people, but everybody carried the water together and that's how we get things done. So when I look at your municipal um uh um vision of what you'd like to see on your legislative platform, I think the county shares it because we too look at unfunded mandates. We too look at the MINDOT pass downs. We look at all these things. They also affect us as a municipality and those are some of the same things, same themes on our legislative platform. So I just wanted to let you know. It it does look like the first anaerobic digester will um be a reality. We're we're hopeful. And as we we look to expand and we will look to expand, we will look at other locations to be able to do that. They're not easy to cite. You can well imagine, it's like anything, like they're 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 difficult, always not in my backyard. So we share that. And um I just, I just want to say how much we have already started the Zero Waste Initiative here and we put a date on it. And we're going to, that's going to be one of our first initiatives out of our climate change. And so we're on board with you and and assisting you. And we're, we're going to need partners. And when we went to the Climate Action Plan to change up what we're doing, we decided not to just be internal anymore. We decided we needed to be external. And so our cities are our partners. And so we're looking forward to working with your community and with um whatever liaison committee you have that looks at sustainability or environmental, we're interested in making sure to to pair with you. We've already offered grants for um trying to get composting set up in the infrastructure and I don't see that ending. I only see it growing larger, so we can help you be successful as well. And so I see that. On the sports grants, I want to, I want to tell you, these are some of the most popular things that we do. So um I I really appreciate all the work. I worked great with Amy Markle. In fact, she's probably one of the stars among all the cities. In fact, she's probably one of the stars among all the cities in Hennepin County of being able to write the best grants. And when there, anybody asks me, how do I know how to write a great grant? I said, you should go talk to Amy, Amy Markle, and I think she's talked to a lot of people. I send them her way. I think she'll continue to be successful for you. And I'm trying to figure out if we can move this even further. I know there's, you're looking at some equipment for like picnic tables for the disabled that accommodate those things. And I'm trying to look if we can expand our definitions into including that. And so I think those are all great ideas. When we talk about accessibility, that really matters to us. On, on the housing front, I just want to say that Hennepin County, on a usual year, gives about $140 million on housing and housing supports. This year, we added about $40 million more out of ARP dollars to try to make that a reality. With the infrastructure bill coming down too, it will help, because we need a lot of infrastructure around housing and affordable housing, and we think that that will help us. We also have moved to a single occupancy residence, which we're going to try. And we've got a first project coming online to try to make, to see if this is a good viable alternative. We think that it is. There are other cities that are doing this. We continue to invest in those programs. I think one of the biggest things is, is getting out to the developers to let them know that the county can be a partner, and also getting in front of these projects fast enough so that they can apply for the grant dollars that we have, along with Met Council and the state. Because we, as we all know, when we do an affordable project, we all need to come together, and it takes a lot of pots of dollars to make these things happen. And I, I just want to say that I heard our chiefs loud and clear about the embedded social workers, and that's why you have more. At one time, that, that program might have been in jeopardy, and they all rose up and said, no, you can't take this. This is so impactful, and we can't bear the burden of all of it. And so we made that a reality. I'm, I'm really grateful. Thank you for coming to me and asking for those things. I also agree with the arbitration and some of the other issues. The county sheriff's office is feeling the brunt of all the issues around policing and how difficult it is, the PTSD, all the people off work. We are filling in for Minneapolis. The sheriff's office is filling in at the hospital. They're filling in for the Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park folks. They back up a lot of other jurisdictions. And we've been taxed more and more, and a lot of overtime too, because of this. So we support all the same things that Richfield does. And I, I look forward, if you need assistance, if you need the county to come and testify or to write letters of support, I'm always here to help with that. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Gotal. That is a lot. We are very appreciative of your support and partnership. So I know we do have two more representatives left. We have Met Council Representative Molly Cummings, and we do have Talia Glass here on behalf of our Congresswoman Ilhan Omar. So I wanted to go to Molly, Representative, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you so much. It's great to be here. I am Molly Cummings, and I represent District Five on the Met Council, which is Hopkins, Edina, Richfield, and Bloomington. So proud to represent Richfield, so much going on and wonderful partners in the work that we do. The legislative proposal process for the Met Council is still in progress. So I don't have a lot of specific proposals, however. We are going to continue to pursue authority to create an administrative citations program for fair enforcement. This was a continuation from 2020 and 2021. This would free up our uniformed armed police officers from issuing citations and fair evasion and let them, allow them to use their time in a more productive way. So hopefully that will get through the session. We have a bill pending for the 2021 session to authorize council to create an inflow, infiltration mitigation program for private properties. Hopefully that will get some traction again this year or in 2022. The council is going to be requesting funds for bus rapid transit development, public infrastructure inflow and infiltration mitigation projects, and, and the regional parks capital program. So I think as everyone here is aware, we have the grand opening on December 4th for the Orange Line, many, many, many years in process. And what an exciting day it was to see so many jurisdictions come together, federal, state, county, cities, individuals told wonderful stories that told the humanity of why we do these BRT routes, not just the facts and figures and, and data, but the stories behind who uses, how they use it, and how important these routes really are. It was really exciting to board that bus and take one of the first trips. So thank you to everyone who has been a part of that, just so critical. Following up on that, of course, the D-line will open hopefully the end of 2022. We have the five stations were actually completed ahead of schedule, not something you hear very often in big construction projects such as this. But all of the station foundations for the future are in place, and so the amenities and shelter should be completed next year. Hopefully, weather permitting, the construction will pick up again in April. So that's exciting. So the Met Council budget is proposed levy increase of 2% in 2022. We had a 0% increase for 2021, so lots of opportunities there. We're still getting some feedback on that. Just briefly, the Green Line extension, although it does not go specifically into Richfield, is an important spine in our robust transit system. And, and it is certainly a statewide regional project. We have paychecks that are going to 65 different counties in the state of Minnesota. So it has a very broad, broad spectrum of individuals who are, are part of the construction of this line and will continue to be. I think as everybody knows, we have run into some major construction delays on the project, some unanticipated challenges. We are currently re-baselining. We are working with London McCrossan Joint Venture to look at the last portion of construction and resequence what will happen. And until that is done, originally it was going to be Revenue Service 2023. That is not going to happen. We don't have a date at this point. We are working with London McCrossan, and they have to negotiate with all of their subs, which is more than 150, is a very, very big project. But we hope that in the first quarter of 2022, we will be able to give an accurate date of when we expect Revenue Service to begin. So believe me, we are as anxious as anybody on this call or anybody in the metro area or the state to be able to put a date out there. And as soon as it is available and it is something that we can stick with, we will be announcing that. So again, I think as everyone has said, this is the time to think bold, to think differently, to continue these partnerships. It is all of these partnerships, all of the entities that are on this call and beyond, that allow us to tackle the big issues that we all are currently facing. So it's an exciting time, because there may be some revenue available that we have not had before. But there, we need creative thinking. We need to think outside of the box, and we need to bring all of that energy, all of that creativity together to deal with the reality of the world in which we're currently living. So thank you for allowing me to be here today. It's great to see everyone, and I hope next year it's going to be in person. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Commissioner Cummings. And I love the theme of just dreaming big and using our creativity in new ways. We've been all responding to crisis for quite a while now, and it feels good to, to think about this dreaming big and what that would look like together. I did want to recognize our Richfield Public Schools Board Chair who joined us earlier, Tim Paulus. Thank you so much, Tim, for joining us. We greatly appreciate you being here. And then normally, we do have a separate, we will have a separate session with Congresswoman Ilhan Omar. And I know we have about 10 minutes left, so I'm wondering if I could pass it to Talia very briefly, just to give us maybe one or two minutes update at the, at the federal level? And then we will close out with City Manager Rodriguez.
Happy to. Thanks again for having us. These meetings are so helpful to, to get a sense of what's going on there and find ways that we could maybe help out. I wish all cities did these, frankly. So first, on Woodlake, I know we weren't able to select it for the community project funding this year. But I just got off the phone with our chief, and it would be one of our top priorities for next time. And so, you know, the ones that we did pick for this year haven't been funded yet, and it, the future of those is a little up in the air. They've run into some Senate issues, but the next time that we have an opportunity to lift up Woodlake, it'll be one of our top priorities. I was excited to hear the presentations, and it looks like a lot of your priorities are aligning what's, with what is in the Build Back Better Act. Oh, I'll just put a brief summary of it in the chat. And I'd be happy to send around more detailed section-by-section summaries as well, if people are interested in that. Some of it is subject to change, because it still has to get through the Senate. Our legislative director did hear a rumor that it could be getting voted on as early as this weekend, though she's a little skeptical of that timeline, but it seems close to the finish line. And there were great provisions in there that align with a lot of the priorities that you were talking about, especially some of the clean energy ones. I think there's some really exciting stuff in there. And then just one last plug, especially for Amy, the grants was, as you are applying for grants, federal or not, please always feel free to reach out for a letter of support. It's one of the kind of quickest, easiest things we can do to help out and underutilize, I think.
Thank you so much for that report, Talia, on behalf of the Congresswoman's office. City Manager Rodriguez, you want to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming today, well, coming virtually. I look forward to it every year, and I, I know it's a long list of, of wants from the city, wants and needs. But I, I do want you to know that we know that we're lucky. We're really lucky to have such responsive, hard-working legislators who really know their stuff and know, and know Richfield. And if, and if I didn't already know that, and we didn't already know that, I certainly hear, hear that from our lobbyists who have also joined us today, Angie Hus and Ann Lucheski from Lockridge Grindel. So thank you. I really, really do appreciate it, and we are all here to support you and your efforts. Any, any one of us are happy to come testify, write letters of support, meet with legislators, whatever you need. So I know you'll be in touch and working with us as the session rolls on. So any closing thoughts from anyone? Councilmember?
Thank you, City Manager. I just wanted to thank everybody. And I just want to take 30 seconds in my, not part of the city's priorities, but Representative Greenman talked about voting rights, and we have a voting rights case on appeal right now. You cannot be a delegate in Minnesota for a political party without, if you are a felon on probation. And we're fighting to see that that's unconstitutional, but the legislature has 100% authority to make that so or not. And so I just wanted to lift that up. And also, in, in a, in a more positive praise of the, the legislature, you passed some of the best wage theft laws in the country. But in Hennepin County, we have not prosecuted one perpetrator of wage theft. And so incredible work on that regards. But just talking with our chief yesterday about that, we would love to partner with you and, and get tools as we, as we deal with this surplus, really scaling up the infrastructure to be able to address that crime that is really pervasive in our state would be amazing. So thank you so much.
If there's not anything else, I can give you four minutes in your day today. That's my gift to you. Thank you again. I really appreciate it. Also, thanks for us to have to put this together, especially because.
Thank you.